Okay, Commissioners, this is item number eight. Application for Certificate of Appropriateness in the Borough of Manhattan at 71-73 Franklin Street, Tribeca East Historic District, docket number 146038. An Italianate Second Empire style store and loft building built in 1859 to 61. The application is to construct a rooftop addition and alter the ground floor.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Olivia Prasey, Preservation Stat. As Jared mentioned, the subject building is 71-73 Franklin Street, located on the south side of the block between Broadway and Church Street within the Tribeca East Historic District. It's a building constructed in 1859 to 61 in the Italianate and Second Empire styles, featuring a cast iron base and stone cladding at the upper stories. Just some existing conditions. At the ground story, you've got historic infill, the storefront bays consisting of one decorative metal grill, panel doors, transoms, panel bulkheads. So just an overview of the scope before I introduce the architect. Proposal is to remove the historic storefront infill at the base, install a new storefront system that is recessed behind the cast iron columns, remove the fire escape. Sorry, I didn't point that out. This is a fire escape. It's not original to the building. It's not decorative, so the proposal is to remove that. And the third item is to construct a visible rooftop addition. And now I'll turn it over to the architect to walk through it.
My name is James Pice. I work with Wayne Touret. We're from Tri-Clover Architects. Before I start, or before Wayne starts to talk about our design and intervention, I did want to go back and reference some points in the historic fabric of Tribeca, actually. So, the DNA of our building, 71 Franklin, starts with two winged Broadway, which was done by Alexander T. Stewart as a commercial enterprise. And you can see on the ground floor, it has a cast iron facade on the base, and it supports four stories of marble clad, marble cladding above, and it has a very simple stone cornice at the top. One of the most significant features about this building really is the ground floor facade. These very slender cast iron columns, which support a much heavier building material above, allow large expanses of glass at the ground floor. And this was important to bring in light, natural light into the interior of the building, especially because this building was used as a department store, essentially. So, many merchants, especially textile merchants, were inspired by this building, and they moved into the Tribeca East neighborhood, and one of the addresses was 71 Franklin. This building, as Olivia said, was built in 1859 to 1861, and it exhibits the same typology as the AT Stewart Building. So, at the bottom, at the bottom, we have our cast iron colonnade supported by four stories of tuck up of marble, which came from Westchester, and then topped with a very simple cornice out of stone and metal. Olivia also pointed out some features of the cast iron facade. Now, in the designation report, it's not very clear what is historic infill, but you can see there is a decorative panel in one of the bays. Also, we have the cast iron which is engaged. Most of the columns, actually, the capitals of the columns have been removed, and I think there's really only one capital that remains. Another significant feature really is this crack system, which is integrated into the cast iron. So, presumably, at one time, there were rolling shutters that were installing these cracks for security and fire. Now, I wanted to talk a little bit about James Pragartis and Daniel Badger. These were two of the pioneers of cast iron architecture in the neighborhood and actually around the country. The cast iron system that they proposed or invented really changed the way that architecture was done in the 19th century. It was very strong. It was easy to install, and most importantly, it actually established active parts. These examples come from Daniel Badger's catalog, which was published in 1865, and you can see, you know, these elements common to all of the cast iron buildings, which are very slender cast iron columns, supporting a lintel, and in some instances, we have these rolling shutters that we probably would have seen in our building as well. But the dominant feature, I would say, in all of these examples really is the expansive use of glass and the very fine window emoluments. They're almost suppressed, and really, it is to bring as much light into the ground floor as possible, and that wasn't possible prior to this era, because buildings were made out of masonry. So, here also is an example of these fire shutters that Daniel Badger created, and then his lensed sidewalk vault, which was also one of his inventions. And what we see in this picture really is, or what we're trying to assemble, is this understanding that it was a kit of parts. His catalog, you could pull elements in to define a whole entire facade and to create an almost architectural language, which he did. Our design will kind of add to that language, and Wayne will speak to that more.
Good afternoon. Wayne Touret, Tri-Clover Architects. So, what I'm going to talk about are three elements that we're going to try and introduce to the building. The first one is the lower colonnade. The second one would be the rooftop addition, and the third revision to the building are the fenestrations around the west, south, and east facades. So, this is where I think that we pick up where Badger left off. If Badger's catalog was around today, I think that we could insert some of these elements into those catalogs. So, we are planning on restoring the colonnade, and we're planning on restoring the vault, pretty much, with bullet glass on the ground floor. And then we have a series of sort of new interventions. This is a screen, which sort of takes the place of Badger's original screen. It's made out of perforated zinc panels. And on lower, the lower part of the facade, is a knee wall of bullet glass, and the bullet glass would come up from the vault here up to knee height. And then behind that is the steel, painted steel facade of glass. And then, well, actually, the significant part of this is that this facade here of storefront is set back independent of this colonnade. This is a full view of our proposal. This is the lower colonnade, so the cast iron part of this colonnade is kept intact, and our new storefront is behind. And I wanted to show, I wanted to forward a little bit to the neighborhood and the context. Did I go too far?
Are you not intending to replicate the capitals on the columns?
We're planning on putting back.
You don't show them here?
No, we have, there is one capital that's left, and we're planning to replicate those capitals. But I'm trying to find, let's see. What I wanted to show here was that on Franklin Street itself, there is a precedent of a lot of cast iron buildings separating the facade, or what I would call the storefront, from the colonnade. So, you have that 69 Franklin, 76 Franklin, 78-82, and over here in the rest of the district, you have it at 45 Warren, 134 Duane, 183 Duane, Chambers Street, Middle Street, and Warren Street. Let's see, now I'll go back. So, this is showing pretty much the front facade of our building, and what I wanted to illustrate here was that this zinc screen panel, theoretically, in our design and the way we are thinking about this, is that this rises through the building and appears at the addition on top. So, the addition on top here is the same zinc perforated panel as it is here. On the lower part here, these zinc panels and blades, and you can see sort of the design of it here, can rotate, but up here, there are panels and they don't rotate. This'll be, this is an illustration of all the different materials we're doing, and so we have the cast iron getting painted similar to what was originally. We have a glass and steel storefront, it's in panels and bullet glass. On the roof, we have these zinc panels and glass, and then above, we have a stair and elevator bulkhead that is stuck up. Here, just to show you what the vault looks like now, is on the left, and the facade here in the lower level is on the left. We think that although one of these look like original, this is a typical Tribeca building that has been, has been renovated over time before landmarks, so any of these facades, I can't attest are original. So, we are now putting in a more consistent new facade, storefront behind the columns. This is a view of what's existing now in terms of the vault, and our new vault is slightly regraded, but a lot more bullet glass, which was traditional, and we have a sample of the bullet glass here. And we can see over here, the separation between the column and the storefront. This is showing a section through the existing, and this is our new section. So, the column stays the same, and I apologize, we didn't draw the top of the column, but we will replicate what's there. This is the new storefront, and the column, it's interesting, it has a embedded rectangular section in the back of it. So, we're setting back six inches from the back of that. This shows our zinc panel above, and this shows our bullet glass knee wall. And you can see it here. Here's the bullet glass knee wall, and here's the zinc panel above. And this is our rooftop addition, so this section here is taken over here in the long section, and a lot of this is essentially railing for the roof above. Instead of doing a glass rail, we extended the zinc all the way up, and then this is the elevator stair bulkhead. So, this section talks about this part here, and this section here with these protruding frames for the windows that overhang here is the section. And at the cornice, we plan on putting a planter with a glass rail. These are the materials again, so this is the existing facade of the tuck up of marble. These are the bullet glass panels. This is this existing storefront, which is pretty much a hodgepodge of wooden emoluments. And this is the west wall, which we will keep as brick. These are the stucco and colors for the cast iron, the colors for the addition and the zinc, again, bullet glass, and the mechanical bulkhead enclosure. So, we talked to this. The next set of slides, we'll talk about the visibility.
Could you just, two seconds. Is there glass behind the zinc panel? So, the zinc operates as what? Just if you could just go back to that side.
Do you want me to go back?
No, I just don't understand it.
The zinc is, you want me to go back to?
On the ground floor.
On the ground floor, yeah. So, here, you can see it here, and I'll go to this section too. So, this is perforated, so you'll be able to get light through it. The glass extends all the way up.
So, what is it?
It's replicating, it's a design element. Part of it is replicating Badger's system of shutters that were original cast iron buildings, but it's also a design element that we wanted to use to tie the addition on the roof to the facade below. And it's a light perforation, it's like this. I mean, it's a little bit of a design strength, but because it was a mercantile textile building, it sort of has that shimmer of fabric. Is that, one second. So, the next series of slides has to do with visibility. So, we tend to get a lot of these buildings which have possible visibilities. This one happens to be Franklin Alley, looking at our building here, this little sliver of our building, and this is the cast iron building that goes to Broadway, that there's a two-story addition that was approved on that. So, this is our addition. You can see it here, and this is the elevator bulkhead here. And this is our mockup. And the mockup appears to be taller than we have it, because originally, there was a previous architect, and they were going to go for a two-story addition, so they made a two-story mockup, and instead of redoing it, they moved it and put a line across where we're doing our addition. So, don't be confused by that mockup being, looking tall.
Can you go back to the previous?
Yeah.
Yes. So, on the adjacent building, is that the enlargement that?
This one here?
No, yeah, that.
This.
What is that?
This is, the landmarks approved the two-story addition on top of this building.
Okay, hasn't been built as yet, is that correct?
Has not been built, yes. That's why it doesn't appear here. So, we mopped it up in a rendering. Again, this is taken from Church and Franklin, the corner, and you'll see closer and closer views to this building, and unfortunately, we have a three-story building to our west, so it's very difficult. So, this is what you see from Franklin and Church. Then as you get closer, you start to see this. And again, we mopped this up. This is the two-story addition that was previously approved. This is the mockup that was originally a two-story, a mockup. The line is the dotted line we put here. And then here, you can see it over here. The addition is set back 15 feet from the front and 30 feet from the back. So, it really reads as a, as a large utilitarian bulkhead, but it's, it doesn't, it isn't the whole wood from the building. This one, I wanted to show the fact that the street wall here is quite regular. The heights of the buildings are really all over the place, so there is not a lot of consistency in the heights of this street wall. And then here, we put in the various additions that have been approved on the street. So, this, these two here had a one-story addition with bulkheads. This one here had a two-story addition, and this is our addition. So, the next series of slides are going to deal mostly with the west, south, and east elevations. Although this starts off with the front elevation, which is compared to what's existing there now. Here's our new addition, new addition and the new elevation. On the west elevation, you have, sorry, this is the rear elevation, I'm sorry. On the rear elevation, there are some windows there. There are, there really is no rear yard, so we're planning on proposing three balconies here, and a reconfiguration of windows, and we're putting in shutters that approximate the store shutters that are usually found in Tribeca loft buildings. And this is the rear of our addition. This is the, let's see, this is the west elevation, sorry. So, this is the west. There are a few windows here. There are lot line windows. We would like to put in more lot line windows here, and we've made a distinction between these windows, being flat top, and the round windows on the front facade. And you can see that the addition, the penthouse is 30 feet back and 15 feet in the front. And this is the east elevation, and we thought it's a multifamily building, we needed light and air, we are cutting back 30 feet, 15 feet.
Is there a reason why you haven't thought of placing your additional floors further back and reducing the visibility from the street?
We are really hamstrung here.
I'm looking at your floor plans. Is it because where you have your existing core?
No, not really. I, if you look, we're pretty much built almost to the lot line, and so you have to set back 30 feet from the rear.
Oh, it's because of the rear yard.
Yeah, and we have to set back 30 feet from the front, and so we're really left with this, this elbow here. So, these are the new windows that we're proposing for the east facade, but it's really completely within a court. And it's not a donut. It's a small court between our building and the Broadway buildings. This is a section through the existing building, which is a typical loft building with stairs. A multifamily building requires a fire stair and elevator, and so we reconfigured that. And these are our floor plans, and I imagine that you would have questions. Sorry, can I?
I have a question.
Yes.
Right. Yeah.
The freestanding columns on the arcades.
Will we go backwards?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
What page?
Well, 10 maybe, or 11. I was interested to see those, and then I started looking more closely, and it seems as if all of those were intended to be freestanding from the beginning. In other words, they're complete in the backside. Yours, of course, are not. You have that bump on the back is, is there for a reason. It was part of an engaged system. And I'm just wondering, you know, I, it's interesting to see this, but I think it all evaporated for me. The point of it evaporated when I discovered that. So, I think these are, to my mind, kind of irrelevant, interesting but irrelevant to the specifics of the, of your proposal. Just wondering if you have thoughts about that.
Actually, on the next slide, you'll see 150 Chambers has a very similar configuration to ours, where it's a three-quarter column with a rectangular.
Well, but was that original, or is that, is that something else that's been pushed back?
Yeah, and also 143 B, as well as the same configuration, a three-quarter column with a rectangular column behind. And in these examples, you can see facade is significantly pushed back.
Yeah, but were they pushed back recently?
To your point. I think that it's hard to know whether this was pushed back before or later, and it's also, I think, hard to know whether our building was built the way it is today or was separate. If anyone could actually, with shortness, tell me that it was still engaged, then I could buy the argument too.
Engaged in what way?
Well, I'll go back to that.
It came just to be.
You're seeing the flat pilaster. The pilaster projects to the edge of the, of the abacus of the Capitol. That's it.
Right, so we have a round column, and in the back, we have an engaged rectangular too. And I don't know if that's.
Which receives distortion.
Part of the storefront, the back of that too, or not?
Well, that, that flat back there, that engaged pilaster is typically, what you see is the facade infill moving either forward or back in that, but it never goes beyond the back edge of that pilaster.
So, that's a given.
Yeah.
Right, okay. So, we could move it and engage it. It's not.
Yeah, it doesn't seem as if it's completely part of your, you wanted to do it, but it's a design effect, not a, not a requirement.
We just thought it would emphasize better the separateness of that screen to the addition of the.
Okay, why don't, why don't we take testimony, and then we'll discuss. Barbara Zay.
Barbara Zay of the Historic District's Council. Tribeca's rooftop cornice lines are an integral and character-defining feature of the neighborhood. The proposed rooftop addition is quite large, very visible, and starkly modern, in contrast to Franklin Street's historic cornices. We ask that the addition be brought down in height and set, and be set farther back in order to minimize its impact. Our committee is also concerned about the proposed removal of historic material on the storefront in order to install setback planes of glass, which would also incidentally reduce the amount of usable interior square footage. We ask that the commission require further study of these elements, as well as the proposed use of vault lights to ensure their appropriate placement. Thank you.
All right. Are there any more speakers on this item? Any more speakers? Okay, we received a letter from a Tribeca resident who opposes the rooftop addition, and we also received a resolution from Community Board One that said to reject the application, that it was not a faithful historical restoration, and the rooftop addition is too visible. Okay, if you can, the architect can come back, yes. Okay, just to follow up on a few things. The visibility of the rooftop addition, I think you've said it's very visible, right? I mean, not hiding the fact, but have you looked at ways to reduce it? You've, you've chosen as a part of your vocabulary to have not a parapet that could disappear, but actually extend the wall, which has an effect of being larger and more opaque. And that was a deliberate move on your part. I mean, it was a conscious decision.
It was my part, because the way the building is sited and the custom building next to it is so low, and you're crossing up the alley, there is just no way to hide it. So, I thought, rather than try to hide it, which makes it look almost like a pump or like a sink, I thought to design something that was a little bit more deliberate.
Okay. I just, at least for me, it seems that sometimes we do have additions that are visible, but I think in general, we prefer them to be smaller than larger, and I think it has a relationship to the size of the building as well, and so sometimes you have larger buildings that can take on a larger addition, and, but the smaller ones have to sort of refine the right balance that doesn't overwhelm it. And since we've received some testimony about trying to reduce the size, and you haven't really explored that, but I think that's something that you could explore.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, we do a lot of work in all our districts, and one of the additions, we do a very good job of hiding them. But in this case, I couldn't do it at all. There are some things that we could possibly do. So, for instance, I could, if needed, you could see here that the roof ends at this line, and if I was to lower the zinc to here and just have a glass rail, would that, would that feel better? I'm not sure. That's where I, that's where I'm not sure exactly, it's like, I don't exactly know.
Well, how did you establish the height initially? I mean, why don't you just lower the whole thing?
So, if I lower the ceiling here?
Yeah.
I could lower the ceiling a little bit?
You could, because it's.
And it's something into the roof line. I'm not sure where your roof line is.
Yeah, your roof line's here.
No, I mean, up the.
Oh, down here, I see.
Yes, where is it? Where is it?
Let's go back to a section. So, this is top of roof, and this is the floor. So, it's, it looks like it's about a foot lower than the cornice before it. And, you know, if we do anything different, we would probably have to reconstruct a lot of the roof, the existing roof. The height we were shooting for inside the addition was 10 feet. We could lower it, but we not.
So, what is that? That's an apartment, that's a half of an apartment. Is that what is?
It's a part of an apartment. It's this, it's a six-floor penthouse to the fifth-floor apartment.
So, those are, what, dead ones or?
The floor plan is a living space.
Can I ask a sep? Sorry, Diana, did you? On the facade, the grill, there's one fragment of grill on the base. Can you go to that?
Yeah, you mean the original facade?
The original facade grill.
There is a grill.
His clicker is not working.
Anyway, I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, but I just want to look at it for a minute, because it seems that you've replaced it. Now, are you saying that you're using this in elevation rather than on the?
Yeah, we're trying to use that in elevation instead of.
I find that really strange.
Are you using that?
So, that's what I mean.
This is, it was working?
Oh, that's.
So, here, this is the grill you're talking about.
Yeah.
So, I'm saying. So I'm saying that we're proposing to replace that grill with a same height approximately of this. And what we like about it is that we were moving the floor, the walls, which contains a lot of that, up the building slightly. It's a base like, like I said, we were not taking Badger's catalog, literally, we're interpreting, but he did have, he usually did have a kind of Wayne Scott knee wall in screens in his designs. And we're changing that, we're proposing to change that, use that.
I could almost buy it easier if you hadn't told me you were trying to sweep the sidewalk up into the building. That's a very unusual thing.
But it's obvious, I mean, I think that that material was designed with the intent of, of being load-bearing. And it's, you know, so you, you know, it was, it was a ground, it was a floor material. So to turn it up on its side and replace what's kind of a beautiful grill, which is, you know, its ornate character, I think, is as valuable as the capitals, maybe, of, you know, that you're going to be replacing. So I'm, I'm not sure about that.
Yes, Diana.
On the, the rooftop addition, you said originally it's like 50 feet back in front and 30 feet back in the rear. Could you move further back in terms of visibility?
Well, I'll show you something.
I know you can see from the other side.
They have the rear yard, so that's it. So it just means that they have a smaller enlargement, right? It, it means the penthouse will become smaller.
That's true. It would, because we're stuck with the 30 foot.
Oh, we're stuck.
So we're stuck with this, where this is.
You're required.
And we're set back here 15 feet, both of those are by.
So you can't, yeah, you can't go.
For cat, but it makes sense that your condition was.
That's viable. Yeah, okay. I understand.
And there's an addition to the left and to the right. You know, I mean, right?
Well, it's.
Block is additions.
Right, it exposes.
Which it seems to justify an additional addition, you know.
Right, but I think that the enlargement that they're proposing matches the height of the building to, where does it lie? It does not, it's not as tall as the enlargement on top, right? It has this, it has the wall.
Let me.
Right. Oh, a lot lower, okay.
So here, sure, as we can see here, this is our enlargement.
Yeah.
This is, up here is their two-story addition, plus there's a bulkhead on top, you can see. We have a bulkhead as well, but it's not, our bulkhead comes probably to the top of the cornice. And if you look here at the rest of the block, you can see, this is essentially, well, this one is even higher, but this is essentially lines up here, and the bulkheads line up here. You know, sometimes we get projects that have tall buildings on both sides, and there are very, many, some people have projects that are built like this.
Any other questions? We can go into comments.
Just that screen on the, the screen on the ground floor, the upper one. Now, why is, you want to match things, I guess, that's what you're saying. But is that really better than having just the glass that is in, traditionally in that window? Or was that, or was there some reason why you wanted to cover that up?
Well, there, there was a reason. The reason was to carry this and make a reason for this. So the outlines, the two are somewhat connected. Also, if you go back to the catalog, I'm not sure about this, but I think I can find a screen that, I think that in some cases, the storefront is blocked. Here, for instance, here's a screen or a shutter. Here are shutters and screens here. I am, I'm proposing to do something that's not literally historic, but something that would add to this sort of building, and I think would make a good addition to it.
But in a sense, it calls attention to the, the penthouse on the top, which is really too big and maybe doesn't want to be called attention to, maybe, just saying.
That's a good point. But if I took the lower screen away, I don't think it would make the addition any lesser.
But not one in a thousand would ever, or one in 10,000 would ever make the association between.
From that alley, might make that association.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, why don't we go into comments? Comments? Sure.
Okay. I've said some of what I think. First of all, I always like inventive ideas to come to the commission. So thank you for bringing yet another inventive idea, as you have in the past. As you heard, I was a little troubled by the, by the storefront disengagement, because I think, I think it's clear that this was not meant to be disengaged. I don't think it harms your, your real estate notions at all. In fact, it helps by a few square feet to reengage it. And I don't think it really changes the, the basic idea of your, of your solution here. So I would hope that that could be redone. I think I can buy the idea of the screen, unusual, but it, but it, but it, okay, idea. I would, personally, I would rather see you use another kind of a bulkhead, not bringing the sidewalk bullet glass up into, as a bulkhead, but use them, in fact, keep the one that's existing and maybe replicate or do something that's in that neighborhood, maybe in that neighborhood. In other words, something inspired by, but not the same one, so that the original is clearly the original and, and the others are not. With regard to the rooftop addition, I think it's been said, and I would agree, that it's just a little bit too big. I think because it's surrounded by something that's bigger, it doesn't have to be reduced very much, but maybe, maybe.